All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So that passes five zero. Moving on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comment section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Do there any requests to speak on any items not on this evening's agenda?
We have none.
Thank you. So moving on, we have no items on the consent calendar. Public hearing will move on to item number two, Coastal Development Permit, CDP 24-0016, to demolish an existing single-family dwelling and attached garage and construct a new one-story single-family dwelling with attached garage at 132 Monarch Bay Drive. So do we have a staff report?
Yes, Danny Giametti for our staff report tonight.
Thank you, Brenda. Good evening, Chair, fellow commissioners. Project before you tonight is a request to demolish an existing single-story, single-family dwelling with an attached garage within Monarch Bay and construct a new single-family dwelling with an attached garage located within the single-family zone, coastal overlay district, and the appeals jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. This is the project site. It's a 12,556-square-foot internal lot located within the Monarch Bay community. It's relatively flat, and again, it's zoned RSF four, single-family, located within the appealable area of the city's coastal zone. It's surrounded by other single-family dwellings ranging from one to two stories. Some photos of the site. As I said, currently, there's a one-story house onsite with an attached garage. Home was built in 1965. Some existing exterior improvements include a pool, fire pit, barbecue area, planters, and a mixture of concrete and perimeter landscaping. All improvements are proposed to be demolished with the new house. Just stated earlier, as the project is located within the appealable zone of the California Coastal, I'm sorry, of the appeals jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission, coastal development permit is required. This is the site plan of the proposed lot and dwelling itself. So again, demolishing all existing improvements and building a new 4,282-square-foot one-story dwelling with a 722-square-foot attached three-car garage. Exterior improvements include a pool, spa, series of low planter and retaining walls, and hardscape and landscape improvements throughout the site. This is the floor plan. As I stated, it is one-story. The floor plan includes four bedrooms with en suite bathrooms and walk-in closet, open kitchen, living and dining area, family room, and an office, all shown there. So the elevations, the front and back, the total height of the structure is just over 16 feet, measured from the lowest existing grade elevation to the top of the roof, which conforms to the max height limit of 24 feet, the city's requirements for structures with a roof pitch of zero to 3/12s. The design itself is a coastal contemporary-style theme, a combination of white smooth stucco, stacked stone, horizontal wood siding walls, charcoal slate roofing, and white window openings. The garage door is proposed in a gray wood design, and all gates and fences would match the new doors of the home. So the proposed yard improvements, as you can see, there's a series of drought-tolerant landscaping, some hardscaping, which would include pavers, decorative concrete, some decomposed granite, and some turf areas. As you can see, there's also a new pool and spa proposed, some low retaining walls, and planter walls. It's the development standard table, identifying conformance with all of the requisite development standards. As you can see, it's compliant with all standards. The project has also received approval from the Monarch Bay Homeowners Association. Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the attached draft resolution, approving the subject entitlement. The applicant and myself are available for any questions. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, Danny, thank you for that report. At this time, are there any commissioner questions of the staff? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing, and I do have a request from Stan Andrade to speak.
Hello, Madam Chair and commissioners. My name is Stan Andrade. I just wanted to introduce myself and really just publicly thank Danny and staff for the great job they did to get us here tonight. Some of these projects can get a little complicated, but he makes it as smooth as they get. So thank you again, and I'm here for any questions, if you have any, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. No further speakers. I will close the public hearing and bring it back for any commissioner discussion.
As far as I'm concerned, I've reviewed the entire report, and Danny made a great presentation. I don't have any questions, and I can make the seven findings listed in the ordinance, and I'm in support of the project.
Thank you. Further comments?
I'm in agreement as well. It was a great presentation. I think it's a good project, so.
Thank you. Any further?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, great project, really nice design, conforms with our local coastal plan, our zoning ordinance, it's consistent with the neighborhood. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't approve this, and I'm in support as well.
Without further ado then, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving coastal development permit, CDP 24-0016.
Second. Start with the motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? So that passes five zero. Congratulations. Moving on to item number three, Coastal Development Permit, CDP 24-0014, to demolish an existing single-family dwelling and attached garage and construct a two-story single-family dwelling with a basement and attached garage at 419 Monarch Bay Drive. Do we have a staff report?
This is also Danny's project.
Good evening again, commissioners. My second project before you tonight is another request to demolish an existing home in Monarch Bay and construct a new home with an attached garage. This home is also located within the coastal overlay district and the appeals jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. This is the subject site. The lot itself is 8238 square feet, located within the mall area of the Monarch Bay community. As you can see, this lot backs to Pacific Coast Highway. It's a generally flat lot, except for a short up slope along the rear and northern side yards. This lot is zoned RSF, residential single-family four, and is located within the appealable area of the city's coastal zone, and is surrounded by similar single-family dwellings ranging from one to two stories. Some photos of the existing site. The existing dwelling is a two-story, 2,850-square-foot home with an attached garage. This particular home was built in 1967. Exterior improvements on the site include landscape planners and a mixture of concrete and perimeter landscaping. As part of this project, all existing improvements are proposed to be demolished. So again, because the project is located within the appealable area of the California Coastal Commission in the coastal zone, a coastal development permit is required. Site plan of the proposed home and yard improvements. So this project would involve the construction of a 6,612-square-foot two-story dwelling with a fully subterranean basement and a 1,038-square-foot tandem-style four-car garage. Exterior improvements for this property include a pool and spa, a series of low planter and retaining walls, and hardscape and landscape improvements throughout the site. This is the main level, or the street-level floor plan. The floor plan for this level includes a large entry foyer into an open bar and lounge area, an office, two bedrooms with en suite bathrooms, closets, hall bath, elevator, and stair access to upper and lower floors. This level is about 2,000 square feet. This is the upper level above the main floor. This level includes a kitchen, dining and living areas, the primary bedroom, and en suite bathroom with walk-in closet, a hall bath, laundry room, and large deck off the front of the home. This level is about 2,600 square feet. And then finally, the subterranean or basement level, which is wholly underground, includes a game room and media room, two additional bedrooms with en suite bathrooms, a hall bath, a wine/cigar room, a mechanical room, and a large storage room, roughly 2,000 square feet. This is the front and rear elevations of the proposed property. The height of the structure is 24 feet, as measured from the basement ceiling elevation to the top of the roof ridge, which conforms to the maximum height limit of 24 feet for structures with a roof pitch of zero to 3 and 12, as identified by that red arrow there showing the 24 feet. Additionally, two chimneys are proposed to project two feet above the 24-foot height limit, which conforms to the maximum three-foot projection limit for chimneys in the zoning code. It's the rendering of what the proposed home will look like. This is also a coastal contemporary-style home, utilizing a combination of smooth stucco and stone veneer. The windows and doors would be narrow-framed glass, and the garage door would be finished with vertical wood siding, which you'll see on the bottom right there. So the proposed hardscape and landscape improvements for the site, so a new pool and spa and barbecue island are proposed, and the yard areas would also be refreshed with a series of stone veneer retaining walls and screen walls to screen mechanical equipment and also form a code-compliant pool barrier. And the remainder of the yard areas are proposed as a mixture of concrete patios and pavers and some drought-tolerant landscaping. This is the development standard table. As you can see, the project conforms to all requisite development standards. This project has also received approval from the, conditional approval from the Homeowners So staff finds the proposed project consistent with the policies and provisions of the City of Dana Point General Plan, the zoning code, and the local coastal program. The project's been found to comply with all development standards, and staff therefore recommends the Planning Commission adopt the attached draft resolution approving CDP 24-0014, subject to the findings and conditions of the approval contained therein. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, Danny, thank you for that report again. Bringing it back, any commissioner questions of staff? No. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Any requests to speak?
We have none.
With no requests to speak, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for commissioner discussion. Anyone like to start? Commissioner Dingra?
Yes, I think it's a great report, and frankly speaking, the architect ought to be commended for doing such a great job with veneer and siding and coming up with a contemporary home coastal theme. I'm in support of this project.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I could hear a beautiful house, really well-designed. I'm not sure where the architect is, but appreciate the attention to detail on this site. It's, you know, it's zoned, it complies with our LCP, certainly compatible with the neighbors. There's no major land form changes. For all those reasons, I'm in full support.
I'll echo my two previous commissioners. I really enjoyed this design as well, same architect actually on this one as our next item as well. So I think we've got another probably good one coming up. We'll see. Yeah, I agree, everything's in the staff report. Thanks again, Danny. I think we've got everything we need to make the requisite findings.
I agree. All right, I echo comments, beautiful design. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 23-0048.
Second.
Can I, it's CDP 24, right?
If I turn the page, I got the wrong one.
Just want to make sure we've got the right number. It's okay. Let's start over.
Let's do that one more time. I make a motion to approve CDP 24-0014.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes five zero. So congratulations, beautiful home. So moving on to item four, Coastal Development Permit, CDP 23-0048. So moving on to item four, coastal development permit, CDP 23-0048, to demolish an existing two-story, single-family dwelling, and construct a two-story, single-family dwelling with a basement and an attached two-car garage with minor site development permit, SDP 24-007M, to construct a retaining wall over 30 inches in height and the required front yard setback at 345 Monarch Bay Drive. So do we have a staff report?
We do. Natalie Tran will provide a staff report this evening.
Good evening Commissioners, this is our third Monarch Bay project. So the project before you is for coastal development permit, CDP 23-0048, and minor site development permit, SDP 24-0027, located at 345 Monarch Bay Drive. So to give a little bit of an overview, the subject site is located in the residential single-family four zoning district and the appeal jurisdiction of the coastal zone. It is part of the Monarch Bay community and is surrounded by single-family dwellings and the Monarch Bay Beach Club. So here's a picture of the existing front elevation, which shows a two-story, single-family dwelling with an attached two-car garage. Then here are pictures of some of the neighboring properties and the Monarch Bay Beach Club across the street. So to give a little bit more background, the existing structure was built in 1966 with a variance allowed for 14-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required 20-foot requirement. Today, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structure and build a new two-story, single-family dwelling with a basement and an attached two-car garage. Since their project involves the demolition of an existing structure and the construction of a new, single-family dwelling in the coastal zone, a coastal development permit is required. The applicant is also proposing various site improvements, including the construction of a new retaining wall over 30 inches in height in the front yard setback, which does require a minor site development permit. So here is the proposed site plan, and you can see that the structure meets the required setbacks, including the 14-foot front yard setback modified by the variance. You can also see that there are some proposed site improvements, including the construction of the over-height retaining wall in the front yard setback, as well as the maintenance of the existing community walkway. Now this is the basement level floor plan, and in order for this structure, for this to not be counted as a story, since there is a two-story height limit in this zone, the basement is designed to be wholly underground in accordance with the city's definition of a basement. Additionally, there is an egress wall you can see towards the rear of the structure that is conditioned to meet both the city's basement definition and the California Building Code's emergency egress standards. This is the first level floor plan, which is partially subterranean in the rear, and there is an attached garage that can accommodate the two covered parking stalls required for a detached, single-family dwelling. And then here is the second level floor plan, which has the kitchen and the primary bedroom of the structure. Now here is the side elevation of the proposed structure, where I can show you a little bit more about how its height is measured. So residential building height can be measured from the ceiling of a maximum 10-foot-high basement, but since the proposed basement's ceiling is greater than 10 feet in height, the structure's low point is actually at the vertical elevation 10 feet above the basement finished pad. So this is where the measurement of building height commences, and you can see from here that the proposed structure does not exceed the 24-foot height limit for a roof pitch of less than 3/12ths. Here's a cross-section that further illustrates how height is measured from the structure's low point, 10 feet above the basement finished pad. Now this table here shows how their project complies with all applicable development standards in the RSF four zoning district, including setbacks, height, lock coverage, landscape coverage, with the exception of the 14-foot front yard setback modified by the variance. The project has also received approval from the Monarch Bay Association. And as part of the project, the applicant will also be building a retaining wall over 30 inches in height in the front yard setback. Alternatives to the height limit for retaining walls do require minor site development permit. This wall, in conjunction with the other step retaining walls in the front yard, will create usable private open space that is otherwise limited at the side and rear yards of the property, where there is some steep topography and also the community walkway. The wall will have a stone finish and tie into the design and materials of the proposed structure, and it will also provide landscaping to screen it from public view. Finally, here are some renderings that give you a better idea of the materials and finishes of the proposed structure and retaining wall. To conclude, staff finds that the proposed project complies with the Dana Point zoning code and the local coastal program pursuant to the attached resolution. Therefore, staff recommends approval of coastal development permit, CDP 23-0048, and minor site development permit, SDP 24-0027. Staff and the applicant are present to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Natalie for your presentation. So with that, any Commissioner questions of staff? Vice Chair Nelson?
Quick question for you, so on the approval letter from Monarch, there's some revisions that are required as a condition of their approval. Are the elevations updated with those changes? Because there's a note that the west elevation's going to change, but it's not really clear what that change would be.
Thank you. The revisions to the west, I'm not 100% clear on what the revisions are at this time of this letter, but I can double-check with the applicant if the applicant is here.
Yep, the architect's here, maybe he or she could address that particular item. It may be minor. My only concern would be that it has to come back, so we might make, set him up to win here. That's the only question that I've got.
Hi, I'm Nicole with Brandon Architects. So that kind of letter was, we were going through the process of the CDP and the HOA, and we made specific revisions to address the CDP comments, and then that was addressing this patio in the back, and that was a minor revision. They gave us approval once we reduced that patio and that rear elevation to only seven feet in depth. So the latest plans that the CDP has that were presented today are fully approved by the HOA.
Thank you, any further questions? No? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing, any requests to speak on this item?
We have none.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back for Commissioner discussion. Anybody want to kick off? Vice Chair Nelson?
Yeah, I mean, I think, A, kudos to Monarch Bay, because they do all the hard work here, and they deliver these projects pretty, well, staff does plenty of work too, I'm sure. But it makes it pretty easy for us, beautifully designed, it's, you know, an interesting site with some really unique characteristics in the neighborhood with the trail. I don't have any issues with the project, it's zoned for the design, complies with our LCP, it's compatible with the neighbors, underlying general plan consistency, so I can easily make the findings and we'd support this tonight.
I echo the same comments, and I, again, I think architect ought to be commended in this particular case, using a brick veneer and paneling, metal paneling. It's a great design, and I can make the finding.
Okay, then, again, without further ado, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving coastal development permit, CDP 23-0048, and minor site development permit, SDP 24-0027M.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes 5-0, congratulations. So moving on to item number five this evening, minor conditional use permit, CUP 23-0009M, allowing the optional duplex parking arrangement permitted for duplexes on lots less than 50 feet wide, and minor site development permit, SDP 23-0032M, permitting two roof decks in association with an additional, pardon, with an addition and a remodel of an existing duplex at 34622 Camino Capistrano. Do we have a staff report?
This is also Natalie's project?
So this next project before you is for a minor conditional use permit, CUP 23-009, and minor site development permit, SDP 23-0032, located at 34622 Camino Capistrano. The subject site is located in the residential duplex 14 zoning district and is outside of the coastal zone. It is surrounded by other, single-family and multifamily dwellings, as well as single-family coastal bluff development to the south. Here is a picture of the existing front elevation, which shows a two-story duplex with two attached one-car garages. Then here are some proper, pictures of the neighboring properties, which are similar to story structures. So the existing duplex was built in 1962, and is currently legal non-conforming to parking. Today, the applicant is proposing to construct an addition and a full remodel of the duplex. And as part of the addition, the applicant will expand the garage area to create two covered parking stalls for one unit, and one covered stall and one uncovered tandem stall for the second unit. This optional duplex parking arrangement is permitted for duplex on a lot less than 50 feet wide pursuant to a minor conditional use permit approved by Planning Commission. Additionally, the applicant proposes to construct two roof decks, which are permitted pursuant to a minor site development permit. Here is the proposed site plan, and you can see the areas of addition hatched, and also how the lot is narrow at 40 feet in width. Here is the proposed uncovered tandem stall for one unit, and here are the proposed roof decks for both units. These are the proposed floor plans, and on the first floor, you can see that one unit will have a two-car garage, and the other unit will have a single-car garage and an uncovered tandem stall. This optional parking arrangement for duplex on a lot less than 50 feet wide requires a minor CUP approved by Planning Commission. It will be designed to meet the applicable standards, including recordation of a tandem parking agreement and planting of a 24-inch box tree to screen public views. However, the existing driveway configuration will be maintained to allow for three vehicles to park on the driveway and to minimize impact to on-street parking. Along with the addition and full remodel to the duplex, the applicant is proposing to construct two new roof decks, one for each unit. The roof decks are designed to not exceed the maximum permitted area of 285 square feet each, or their maximum building height limit of 26 feet. And from these elevations, you can also see how they are integrated into the roof system and are not visible from all sides of the structure. Then here is a cross-section that shows a little bit more of the roof deck and its relationship to the rest of the structure. Finally, this table shows how the project will comply with all applicable development standards in the RD14 zoning district, including setbacks, height, lock coverage, and landscape coverage. The proposed garage expansion and the uncovered tandem stall will also bring the duplex into conformance with the minimum required number of parking stalls. To conclude, staff finds that the proposed project complies with the Dana Point zoning code pursuant to the attached resolution. Therefore, staff recommends approval of minor conditional use permit, CUP 23-009, and minor site development permit, SDP 23-0032. Staff and the applicant are here to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I interject here, just to clarify, the existing photo you see there is not actually the existing conditions you might see out there today if you did a site visit. This is a subject of a code enforcement action where some demolition was done to the property, so I just wanted to clarify that. It was mentioned in your staff report, but I just wanted to clarify for the presentation for the public that might be watching.
Great, thank you, and thank you Natalie. So with that, are there any Commissioner questions to staff on this item? Commissioner Dingra?
One clarification, so the existing condition was non-conforming relative to the garages. The proposed condition with the three parking and one tandem stall is in conformance with the lots less than 50 feet wide?
Correct, so previously, you were correct, there were only two garages, and each of them could only fit one garage, which it does not conform to our current parking ordinance. However, this new option for them, so technically for a duplex, you can have two two-car garages, or if you have a lot less than 50 feet in width, you can do the optional tandem parking configuration for a two-car garage, plus a one-car garage and a tandem stall. So because the law is 40 feet in width, it makes sense to do that tandem parking configuration.
Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Additional questions? Vice Chair Nelson?
Yep, a couple of questions. On the driveways, we're not changing the driveway, right, or the access to the lot stays the same?
Yes, the current size, length and width of the driveway is staying the same, it does conform with the 20-foot garage setback.
Okay. And then, so I was out there today, what I'm trying to figure out is where the roof line stopped, kind of where they cut the roof. Do you know on the plans where that would be, like, as far as height goes? Do they cut it right at the top of the existing roof pitch?
Sorry, could you repeat your question?
Yeah, so if you go out there, you could see where they demoed out part of the roof on the existing structure, and it looks like they demoed it right at the, where the top of the roof pitch is, on the, what was the existing roof, and I'm just trying to verify heights.
To my knowledge, they are still maintaining the, the structure, the previously existing height of the structure, which does not exceed 26 feet in height, which is permitted for the roof pitch that they are proposing. And the roof deck will maintain under that height limit.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? No? With that, I will open the public hearing, do we have any requests to speak?
We have none.
All right, I will close the public, public hearing and bring it back for Commissioner discussion.
I'll make some quick comments, thank you for the presentation Natalie, and thanks to staff for, you know, finding a code enforcement issue, you know, just in August, and getting this turned around in, in front of us so quickly, so I think, you know, those folks probably appreciate that as well, even, you know, with the subsequent issues that may result from it as well, but, you know, I imagine they're working through it. With the report here, I think I have everything I need to move forward and make the findings and keep this project going.
Any additional comments?
No comments, I can make the findings.
All right, I don't have any additional comments, so we'll open it up for a motion.
I will move that minor conditional use permit, CUP 23-0009, permitting the optional duplex parking arrangement permitted for duplexes on lots less than 50 feet wide, and minor site development permit, SDP 23-0032M, permitting two roof decks in association with an addition and remodel of an existing duplex.
I'll second.
So have a motion as second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes 5-0. Congratulations, moving on, old business, there is none. Moving on to item, new business, item six. At this time, I will be recusing myself and turning it over to Vice Chair Nelson, as I live in the, on the lantern, so.
Wait till Chair leaves? Okay, that brings us to the next item, which is a preliminary review to demolish an existing, single-family dwelling and construct a two-story, single-family dwelling with an attached accessory dwelling unit, a two-vehicle carport, which would result in loss of one on-street public parking space, and the multiple, and multiple retaining walls, which would require the issuance of four variances and two site development permits. I assume we have a staff report on this?
We do. Before I turn it over to Danny's, I want to mention this is a unusual item for us to bring forward. to bring forward a project like this under preliminary review. But nevertheless, we, in reviewing this project towards the end of our review, we identified a potential issue related to the carport that we want the planning commission's, your impressions of this issue. No actions being asked of you tonight, but we'd appreciate any comments you want to offer and also the property owner and their team are here tonight to speak to you as well. So now I'll turn it over to Danny.
Thank you Brenda, I appreciate the overview, the brief overview. So the preliminary review project before you tonight is a proposal to demolish an existing single-family dwelling, leaving a nonconforming garage and reconstruct a two-story home with an attached accessory dwelling unit. The project also concludes the construction of a carport located within the front yard setback. So this is the subject site. It's a 5,000-square-foot lot located within the Lantern Village. It's a zoned, single-family. This lot, neighboring lots, contain a steep upslope from front to back, so from the street of the Blue Lantern up towards the back. And this particular property is surrounded by a few similarly-built homes where the garage is at street level and the house is located a bit elevated on a pad. In this case, it's about, the house itself is about 10 feet above the street level. It's also important to note that the site's located just north of the Blue Lantern preferential parking district as identified by that red arrow on the bottom of the screen there, which begins approximately where that is. And permits are not required within or in front of this particular property. See, it starts further down the street. This is the street view or the front view of the existing conditions of the home. The red line is indicating the property line and that green line is indicating where the structure or the garage starts along that strip there. So the house itself is a 1,456-square-foot, single-family home. As I said, it's got a nonconforming garage and a nonconforming driveway. That area between the red and green line would be indicative of a nine-inch driveway when 20 feet is required, so the existing nonconforming. And the garage being existing nonconforming in that being located where it's located and also the width of the garage being substandard, it's 19 feet 6 inches where 20 feet is required. So this is the original submittal on the top left rendering of and what we are bringing to you today, the revised version on the bottom right here. Just a little bit of background on these designs and the project is back in the beginning of 2023, the applicant submitted a project as a site development permit for discretionary permit review. From the beginning, the project proposal has been to demolish the existing home and build a roughly 2,300-square-foot, two-story dwelling with a 576-square-foot attached ADU while keeping the existing foundation as much as possible of the home. The proposed ADU's design is a single-story attached to the back of the dwelling and then it's important to note that per the city's ADU ordinance, the attached ADU or ADUs located within proximity to public, close proximity to public transportation are not, attached ADUs and, sorry, and ADUs located within close proximity to public transportation are not required to include additional off-street parking. Therefore, the additional off-street parking area is an optional, optional area. So as designed and originally submitted, the project requires a site development permit for proposing the ADU with existing nonconforming parking. The SDP is also required for retaining walls exceeding 30 inches in height. So both those requests follow the zoning code as written and can be approved via a site development permit. However, the project also includes the construction of the carport area that you see here adjacent to the existing garage and that is located within the front yard setback. And as proposed, the carport and driveway do not comply with the front yard setback requirements and thereby require approval of multiple variances. Additionally, Public Works has expressed concerns that the new driveway apron results in the loss of one on-street parking space, which the city is always trying to prioritize preserving. And due to the potential variances and the loss of on-street parking, staff is recommending, obviously, that we bring this project to the planning commission for prelim review. This is the proposed site plan with the new carport identified in green there and the existing garage in yellow. The red line along the front there indicates where the existing driveway is and how the proposed driveway in width would be designed. So at the same location setback-wise as the existing garage, so the nine inches would be carried over across the new carport. The red arrow at the bottom right is indicative of an additional variance that's required. Currently, as designed, as the project is designed, there is a, only four inches from the proposed driveway to the neighbor's existing driveway. The requirement in the code is four feet of distance required, thereby requiring an additional variance there. Also, the construction of a new second driveway on a parcel that does not have more than 50 feet of street frontage, so this particular parcel does not have more than 50 feet and thereby would require a variance to allow for an additional driveway. And then lastly, construction of an accessory structure or carport within the front yard setback would be the additional, the last variance requirement. So again, garage in existing, or new, I'm sorry, new carport within the front yard setback, driveway length of nine inches, so substandard driveway, the only four inches between the new driveway and the existing neighboring driveway and then additional driveway on a lot that is, that has a frontage of less than 50 feet. It's also important to note that the code specifies stating that the driveway shall lead to an approved parking area and historically, this has been a requirement we have typically upheld. So this is an exhibit that our Public Works team made after going out to the site to take measurements. This exhibit shows the owner's proposal on the top left there and then those red lines indicate where those locations would be on the existing conditions. So you can kind of note on here where the new curb cuts would occur under the design, leaving no on-street parking in front of the particular home. Public Works also provided a design alternative. So this alternative only widens the existing driveway apron wing leading to the existing garage, which would accommodate an additional off-street parking stall. Hashed lines are indicative of where you potentially could have an off-street parking area while still maintaining on-street parking. If you see that dimension, the 15 to 17 feet on the left there would indicate that a on-street parking stall would still remain while providing off-street parking. We did pitch this alternative design to the owner, however, they preferred to move forward with the project as designed to get planning commission's feedback for preliminary, preliminary So I also did some research on some of the historical variances along the same block. It's important to note that several variances were granted by the county of Orange for front yard setback structures along Blue Lantern. As you can see here, each number indicates a variance that I was able to find. The zero, the green, is the subject property there. So justification for front yard setback variances for dwellings and garages were due to steep topography and compatibility with neighboring properties. Some requests included variances for garages, living spaces above garages, balconies, and single-family dwellings projecting into the 20-foot required front setback. It's also important to note that there were, there was a statement of typical five-foot front yard setback for garages within some of these variance documents. And variances were also allowed for specific projections like balconies and eaves within the front yard setback. That said, no records were found of variances for second driveways or second garages, carports type things along Blue Lantern, similar to what is proposed here. And I was not able to locate any variance records specifically for the subject property, even though the garage sits within the front yard setback. So these are the required variance findings. Basically, the goal today is to get feedback from the planning commission on whether it believes there might be facts that could support the findings related to or for approval of the variances required for the new substandard driveway and carport proposed by the applicant. Additionally, staff would like the planning commission to consider the importance of maintaining public parking and/or providing sufficient on-street private parking. Concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and I believe has a few slides to provide as well on their behalf. Thank you.
Great, Danny, could you be favored to bounce back one slide there? Just wanted, okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
I do.
Commissioner.
On item six here, what's on the screen, I feel losing a parking space may deter that, the condition, number six here. That's just my preliminary assessment. Once you put it on the board, I'd reviewed it earlier in the package, so.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Okay. Nope, okay, great. So this is not a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then we will go ahead and invite speakers up one at a time, starting with Lori Wright. Good evening.
Commissioners. I'm Lori Wright, here to present our forever home. I'd like to start with a heartfelt thank you to Danny and to Brenda for their feedback, patience, accessibility, and providing this opportunity here to present our case. Thank you to our architect too, David Bailey, who has spent countless hours brainstorming with us and the city presenting numerous solutions for our unique and challenging spot of paradise on Blue Lantern. And finally, thank you planning commission for your dedication to the city and its constituents, making dreams come true while preserving what is best for our community, especially in those unique cases that need your input like this one. John, David, mom, and wonderful neighbors are here tonight for just this reason. We purchased our very original condition beach cottage almost five years ago and got to work exploring every option of our home remodel. We had many fits and starts, meeting some obstacle every step of the way, including topography, nonconforming conditions, parking, and our budget. Almost about two years ago, we thought we struck gold with a solution that worked for the planning department and our family and we set down that path fully committed mentally and financially, spending time and money, a lot of both, and again, after multiple hurdles and roadblocks, were set to obtain approval of our SDP this last August. In heartbreaking fashion, though, our project was suddenly pulled from that meeting due to our proposed on-premise parking. Rescheduled for approval in late September, we were delayed again due to Public Works taking issue with that curbed public parking spot in front of our property. We were not only delayed and crushed, but now without a path forward. Moving into our presentation, please Danny. On slide two, we start with the zoning code that so perfectly pinpoints our issue and what we are asking for, which is to substitute a single curb spot in order to put two parking spots on our own property to ensure parking for us as residents and taxpayers and provide relief to our neighborhood. Please note, we do not struggle with public parking as our home is far from PCH and to your point about number six, we park in that spot, so looking to exchange that one spot for our parking for two spots for our vehicles. On the next slide, as highlighted in the code, we are asking the city to afford us the same privileges enjoyed by almost every neighboring property, which have parking for at least four vehicles so that we can ensure safety and convenience for my family and cooperation with our neighbors. On slide four, please Danny. Our property's uniqueness and a nonconforming garage and no onsite parking requires this variance request and we believe we meet that hardship. Having first tried a hillside build but not making the grade, again, after two years of having this parking area in our plans with the planning department, what we are asking for here tonight, as highlighted in this slide, is in conformity with privileges enjoyed by almost all properties in the neighborhood, which John will present with multiple examples of homes supporting our hardship. I'm sorry, I couldn't, okay, thank you. I'm almost done, thank you. Our plan is both the highest and best use of our own property and avoids creating the domino effect by parking our vehicle in front of our neighbors' homes and so on and so forth. Turning forward two slides, this rendering is the faux-garage door which Danny talked about, we conceded with staff to remove. And on the next slide is where we've arrived with the beautiful home and parking design that we're asking for your help to approve, where we've also listed the goals that we've been working on hand-in-hand with the city to ensure health and safety by remodeling our deteriorating home and adding an ADU for our mom to join us there, as well as increased value of neighboring properties. The next slide shows that backyard rendering of mom's ADU and with that, I will turn the presentation over to John, but thank you all very much.
Hello Commissioners, thanks in advance for your time. My name's John Wright, Lori's husband, and I wanted to go through in a pretty rapid sense some slides that really hopefully solidify our point and where we're coming from and some clear examples that are on Blue Lantern that we're just asking to equal on that privileged side, just to give us the required parking that we really need and four-car spots. Next slide Danny, please. This is, Danny mentioned a proposal that was provided to us just two months ago and what I did is I actually added our car and backing into the single-car port provided as a solution maybe. The problem with this is functionality right off the bat. If we were to back our car into the single-car port, we wouldn't even be able to open our doors with the width provided. Moving on to the length of the actual parking, open parking spot, the 15 to 7 feet, next slide Danny, please. We pulled our current car, a mid-sized sedan Ford Fusion, as far forward as we possibly could. This would mimic a scenario that another public spot would be used or a car being parked in this spot. Next slide. This is how much space is left on the backside, or I'd say non-space left, you guys. If we were to back our car into that single-car port, it would require almost us to do a three-point turn on a single-sided street going down our street to even get around any car parked in front of our house in the proposed public spot. It's a safety issue. We can't even, we couldn't even maneuver around a car probably trying to come out of that one spot. So it's just not functional and it's not, it's not safe and this is really what it leads us to, what we feel is really our only option left, which is the final rendering. Next slide Danny. This is our current garage. I know that it's important to the planning commissioners of how people actually utilize their garage. Utilize it for cars. It's clearly in need for us to have additional parking. There's two cars parked in our garage right now with a motorcycle. Next slide Danny. I'm going to give multiple examples of cars on Blue Lantern Street now that provide not only four-car parking but also additional parking on the backside Seville Place. Next slide, please. This is a car, I'm, sorry, a home, on Blue Lantern with a driveway, a two-car garage on the backside, a huge open carport provided to them for the backside of their home on Blue Lantern. Next slide, please. This is an actual carport on the Blue Lantern side and on the backside, they have two-car garage or two garages, a driveway and a open carport area with a truck parked in it on the backside, providing multiple spots for them to park their cars. Next slide, please. This is a two-car garage on Blue Lantern, open carport in the backside of Seville Place provided to them. Next slide, please Danny. Multiple car spots available, two-car garage on Blue Lantern right across the street from us with a spot made available to them on Seville Place on the backside of their home. Again, well over four spots. Next slide Danny. This is actually a home that is only on the Seville side, but their backside backs up against Blue Lantern with again, a two-car garage and a spot that's wider than what we're even asking for in regards to open space parking, again, on Blue Lantern, but it's on the backside of Seville. Next slide, please. This is actually a David Bailey project, our architect, on a three condo complex that's new, that was provided, I'm almost done, some open carport parking for homeowners on this condo complex, really helping the homeowners of this resident to actually park on their property. Next slide, please. You guys, we're all well aware that when we're walking the streets of Dana Point, they park perpendicular over sidewalks, which we put this slide in to show the importance of providing needed parking for homeowners in their, at their homes and we have to walk around these cars creating a safety issue. I only got one more slide, I think. Danny had mentioned in his presentation, the district parking section of our street, as you go down our street, there's 200 approximately 50 feet of space that are not utilized at all. These homes, this side that you're looking at right here, people park their cars on the Chula Vista side that's not even utilized, complete open public parking is not even utilized on our street and we're only asking for one spot to create two spots on our property, two additional spots, again, in conformity with 95% of every single neighbor in the property in the last slide. It's our cost, you guys, we've, one more slide, sorry. We've spent thousands of dollars in time and commitment really doing everything we can to get where we're at. We're asking for your support of the way we design. We don't really see another path forward unless we have parking for our home. It started with parking, you guys, I want everyone to know. It wasn't even the home design at first, it was the need for parking at our home. Thanks a lot for your time.
All right, thank you. Next up is David Bailey.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm David Bailey, the architect for the project. Lori and John, Lori, they did a great presentation with their slideshow. I don't have a whole lot to offer, just want to point out that we've, I've worked many hours with them looking at options. We've gone through eight variations, we've worked with staff, trying to come up with options and things that'll help. I truly feel the one parking stall that would be given up on the street parking is going to be better utilized by the two stalls for their use and, you know, just please utilized by the two stalls for their use. And, you know, just please consider our request, and we would appreciate any input. I'm here to answer questions, help discuss other options. There's just not many left. We've scaled back the excavation. Originally, we had our carport with storage area. We've scaled that back to reduce the amount of shoring required, just the amount of, you know, dirt removal to make this as minimal as possible impact on the site. Originally, we were going to do a complete tear-down and rebuild. We're trying to maintain existing foundation, floor framing, and just add a second floor. Again, just looking at options, trying to be site-sensitive, and really just asking for your consideration. That's all.
All right, thank you. Next up, we've got Susan, is it Biedor?
Hi. My name is Susan Biedor, and I'm Lori's mom. I'll try not to cry. My, my name is Suzie Biedor, and I'm Lori's mom and John's mother-in-law. The remodel of their home and adding the ADU will provide the necessary safety for them and myself in the future. I'm 74 years old and recovering from two total hip replacements. Therefore, the parking issue is a major concern for all of our safety. Having to park one or two blocks away and then walking to the house in the dark does not make sense and presents a major issue both for Lori, John, and particularly for me in regards to safety. It's imperative that there's parking on the, at the property. Additionally, they have spent an inordinate amount of time and money trying to meet the requirements, and have done everything they've been asked, only to be disappointed time and again. I'm just asking you to consider what they have submitted so that they can move forward with their remodel. Thank you.
Thank you. And Gwen Fletcher.
Almost got me started. I'm Gwen Fletcher. My partner, Susan Stanley, we're both here. We're next-door neighbors to this project, and we support it 100%.
Thank you. All right. With that, I don't think there's any more speakers. I'll bring it back to the Commission for, are we doing discussion with direction?
Input, feedback, whether or not, again, you think this is a project that you could support if it didn't move forward. We're not asking for commitment tonight, just informal feedback.
Okay, perfect. Alrighty, so who wants to start? Luke?
Yeah, sure. I'll go ahead and start. Thank you for the presentation, Danny, and thank you to the applicants and the whole crew for their comments. You know, it really goes to show, I think, how much support you have for this project, especially from neighbors. That, I think, means a lot in a lot of these scenarios, because those are the people who would be impacted by the construction, by the loss of neighborhood parking, and so on and so forth. And I know, both from the comments submitted and seeing you all here, that, you know, you've taken this very seriously and been coming to Planning Commission meetings for a while. So just going through some of the comments, you know, on the picture from the previous project to the current project, I noted that there's a curb cut in the middle that I don't really see a need for, and unless there is a need for it, I'd propose, you know, at some point, if there is an opportunity to remove that curb in the middle, perhaps that works best for everybody. But I defer to the architects and the Public Works folks. That was just a question I'd had previously and had asked staff about, that I'll bring up now. As for the parking district and the whole parking issue, obviously, you know, like Brenda mentioned, it's the most contentious part of the project, and, you know, it's tricky because during some of the public comments, it's almost like it's your parking to convert. And I just want to clarify that it is city parking, and it's a community resource, you know, and it's maybe that your neighbors can't park there anymore, but obviously, you know, I guess, hopefully, your neighbors have some that you could use if you have guests visiting. And I know that here, it's not as much of an issue because there is La Cresta nearby, as, you know, was noted, you know, a block away, there is parking, and there has been an opportunity for the community to have a say in creating the preferential parking district, which I worked with the city to help create. And, you know, the, the boundaries of that were determined by the residents opting in or opting out, deciding whether there was a parking issue in that area. So, you know, here we're changing conditions for the future, but obviously, at that time, there was not seen a parking issue that the community wanted to be involved in. I'm not sure exactly where that cuts in terms of, you know, approval or not of this issue, but I just want to flag the history here. I've known this community, you know, this particular neighborhood for, you know, 30 years going on, and I don't, while I, you know, worry about all folks late at night wandering around, you know, I, I don't want to say there's a lot of safety issues here. So I just wanted to flag that. Let's see, I think that is just about all of my comments here. So, yeah, thank you, everybody, for putting together what looks like a, a great dream house, you know, for a lot of folks to be jealous of. I think it's a nice design, and the inclusion of an ADU, I think, is a, a nice touch as well. So, you know, overall, I, I think it's an interesting project. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your presentation. I think the home design is beautiful. I do have a couple of questions. How many cars in total are there? Is it six, or is it three?
Five.
Okay. So there's the two that are in the garage as storage?
There's two in the garage and storage, and then there'd be two in that carport.
And there, and then still one on the street?
We've heightened the garage in order to put a second lift, in order to have two cars, in order for that garage to accommodate three vehicles. Those classic cars are parental mementos, so we don't ever see getting rid of those.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I just, just wanted to kind of conceptualize and understand.
Yeah. So Mom drives. She wouldn't be without her car, and we both have commuter cars because we work in LA or Irvine, so that's the five vehicles.
Understood. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, my, my main concern really is just, I know your street very well. I, my first job was at Craft House. I drive Blue Lantern every single day, so I know the location, and my concern is, A, taking away public parking. It is, it is close to PCH. You do have, you know, the alley right there is Craft, Craft House. There's a number of, you know, public uses for that street, the people use that parking for. So to convert something from public parking to private parking in that specific area, I think I do have a little bit of a problem with. And I also, you know, yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at. I think the, I think there's a couple of reasons of why you would grant the variance. But, you know, the reason that I'm against is public interest and accessibility. It's blocked from PCH, like I said. It's already kind of a narrow road as it is. I was, you know, as I was driving down there, when people are pulling in and out, I don't think it's the greatest with having such a short driveway like you guys have, and it is a little bit more, better with the traffic flow to do the parallel parking. And then it's, you know, this parking space, I know it's, it doesn't seem like it's a lot, but it is part of our planning and the public infrastructure of this is, you know, public parking. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Sorry, one more comment. Thank you, Commissioner Chris Teigs. The slope, I hadn't talked about that from my notes, and, you know, I, I do want to acknowledge, you know, in terms of the variance, that you are working with difficult conditions. So, you know, I, I am acknowledging that, you know, this is a tough site to deal with, and so, you know, commending you all again on putting together a good, an interesting project despite the conditions, and, you know, noting that for our consideration on the variance.
Commissioner Dinger.
One clarification, and this came in the interaction just now with Commissioner Chris Teigs, is the current garage being used to store classic cars? Is that what I gathered?
They're not classic cars by, by way of, you know, California code, but what I meant was nostalgic cars for us that are vehicles that we will have in our lives forever, along with our forever home.
And then, those cars are not driven?
No, they are driven.
They are driven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you mentioned that you need minimum three cars for the three drivers, correct?
Correct. My truck has 190,000 miles on it, so I do not drive it to work and back. I want to preserve that for its lifetime. And the other vehicle is also for the weekends, so to speak. So we have to have commuter cars. My husband drives up to LA back and forth every day.
Understood. I, I think you've clarified that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And then, Danny, you did a great job on the variance part of it, you know, figuring out the record. And one of the questions I have is, majority of those variances were given because of the steepness?
Correct, yeah. Of the variances I found, part of the justification noted the steep topography of the slopes.
So how does that relate to this subject property?
Well, this particular lot, I believe.
Because from the street level, at least, I couldn't see any.
Right, right. So from the, this lot has front to back just under a 20% slope. So the, the lot itself is, let's say, you know, steep, steep. Back before the Cities and Corporation, when the county was issuing variances on some of these properties, they were doing so based on a, I would assume it would have been some sort of just request basis. Our current code requires that you have a minimum 20% slope to allow for certain other standards to be allowed. But, you know, this particular property was similar in the sense that the steep slope limited the, obviously, the driveway length for the existing garage and some of the neighboring garages that were, were approved. It helps.
Okay. Then the other question is, was there any, anything explored by way of a lift?
By what?
By way of a lift in the garage, by raising the, raising the structure?
Just in regards?
Height of the garage specifically.
Right. Both of the vehi, so the vehicle that would sit on top of the lift is very short, and the vehicle that would be under it would be that vehicle that was on the rendering, the Ford Fusion, so we would have room to be able to put those two cars in, in there, and park two cars in one of the bay, one, in one half of the garage bay, and then the truck in the other half. And then we'd have my mom's vehicle, and then John's daily driver in the carport.
Okay, I'm a little confused relative to how there is a lift with two cars and another car being parked there in the garage. So total of three cars there?
Three cars in the garage.
And then two cars outside?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. And I, I just want to have one more clarification. Can you put the sketch that Public Works had on the?
Are you talking about that one?
This one, yes. So essentially, you as homeowners have objection to this because you can only get one, correct?
It's because that one that's proposed would not be functional. So our own vehicle is longer than that proposed spot, that 15 to 17, that 15 to 17 that you see there. So assuming that-
Okay, so the 15, 15 to 17 feet is, is not adequate?
It's not adequate for us to be able to maneuver a vehicle between the tail of, of our vehicle that would sit there and the edge of the garage. So it would be too tight to maneuver forward. We'd have to back up, but you'd have to back up around the rear of a vehicle, and since Blue Lantern is a single, or is a divided street right there, we wouldn't have both directions to be able to swing all the way out and maneuver back in, not to mention that Blue Lantern is, you know, cars do barrel down that, that side of Blue Lantern, so even parking parallel, we get honked at, and then I was like, hurry up and park, and we're, we're pretty proficient at parking parallel after five years on this road, but even then, they're impatient, and they drive around us and everything else when we're parking parallel in there. So we just don't feel that, just physics-wise, there's, there's actually room to have this scenario work unless we, you know, sold all of our cars and went with Mini Coopers. You know, it's, it's just going to be that situation, I think.
Commissioner Dinger, let me make a couple of comments real quick. The first one's just functionality. The, the proposed carport is literally six foot, three inches wide. Our car itself, six foot, one inches wide, I mean, feet wide. We couldn't even open our doors if we backed up into it from a functionality standpoint. Lori addressed the safety issues of just trying to get out and around a car is really the main issue. I want to make a quick comment because I'm feeling something around the number of cars that we have, and this is important, you guys. In every home that you see, you drive around any neighborhood, you don't see cars because they're in their garages, and they have a full driveway accessible to them that they park cars in. It just doesn't come to mind, really. It sounds like we have a lot of cars. We have some cars that we inherited when our parents, when my parents passed. So it sounds like a lot. We're just asking for less, almost, than what everybody else has from a political standpoint in the whole neighborhood, because you don't notice it, you don't feel it. It sounds like a lot, but, but it's not. We're asking for, in a sense, less.
No, understood. You, your point's well taken, and I think I have a fairly good understanding after I ask some of the questions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're just trying to address the usability of the cars we have, right? So I would park in the carport, Lori's mom would park in the carport, Lori would come out of the garage from the car lift and come out. So we are trying to use the space as much as possible.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll also maybe note that of 365 days in a year, it's our car, and it, it's not our spot, but it's, it is us in regards to just the demand for that far north of Blue Lantern, that we park in that spot, 361 or 62 night stays of the year. So it's, it is, just, that's just a need, just to address the need up there on that part of Blue Lantern, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further questions.
All right. This brings it back to me. So let me just start with, there you are. You know, I, I came in here with some thoughts after going by and looking at it. We've met before. You are two very, the nicest people that usually are ever in this room on that side. Yeah. And, and that's not lost to me. I think, you know, the, the challenge with, one of the challenges I hear a lot of times is, you know, the, the character of our neighborhood's going to get ruined. And I've always kind of found that fascinating because I don't think structures, garages, cars, none of that's what character. It's the people that are in the neighborhood. That's, at least for me, I find, you know, that the, that the character of individuals is an important thing, and I appreciate you guys, and I've watched you sit out here and participate in, for the last year, not knowing that you guys were coming up here, not that that would mean or matter. So I want to just start with that. And, and then the second is, you know, we have, I say we, the capital we, in this, in this country in any way, and certainly in this state, have made getting, you know, one of the most important things that everybody needs, and that's shelter, very difficult. And, and remodeling a site like this may be even more tricky and more difficult because we have a, a code that's pretty straightforward. Most of it's objective, a lot of, some of it's subjective. Most of it's subjective, a lot of, some of it's subjective. And up here, our role is to referee the code, sort of like a police officer writes tickets. If you break the speed limit, our job is essentially the same thing, where we are looking at the law and making a determination whether you're within the law or not. And that's where I, I'm struggling a little bit here. I don't, I don't have a, well, I have a, an overarching thought around garage doors. And I've always found them to be a troubling problem because they hide things. So, we don't know what's inside most garages. And on my particular street, where you hear people complain about parking, most of the garages are used for living rooms or storage units. And very few of them have cars. And I don't, so, the other thing is, I think parking is a matter of convenience as it relates to whether we have enough or not. There's parking everywhere. It's, is it too far to walk? So, we get into these convenience issues. But kind of my overarching thought is this, is that this is super tricky. I am finding it very difficult to get a couple of these findings. I'm not saying I couldn't get there, but I'm, at the moment, I'm struggling to get, get there. I don't hear a lot of support from the rest of the commission up here. I'm not 100% sure, but I'm just telegraphing what I've heard. And so, I'm concerned that if you walk away, you're not getting a ton of feedback either way. And so, what I want you to know is I'm struggling to make a couple of these findings. And if I can't make one of them, I can't make any of them. So, that's sort of where I'm starting. I do think there's maybe a path to bake those findings, but I need to go and spend a little bit more time looking at this, looking at the existing conditions out there to see if I could get there. But, I don't, I'm one guy. So, there's, you know, four other, or three, three others. So, in this particular case, it gets even more challenging for you because one of our commissioners can't participate. And if we tie, that means you guys lose. And then you get cast off to go redo it again. And that, you know, I've stood where you stand many a nights on my day job, and it's very difficult. And so, I can appreciate what you guys are going through. I've often told people that if most, that the barrier to entry to get a building permit in California is a high barrier. And you guys have done a remarkable job getting it this far. And you could probably start your own business doing this after what you've probably learned. So, I'm, again, I'm struggling with it. I would ask you to consider a couple of things. I know Commissioner Dinger brought it up. I believe you said that you, your proposal would include a lift.
We didn't put it in the, it's not in the city's plan, is that right, Danny? Is that how that works?
Right, it's, you just install it in your garage. You don't need a, well, you might need a building permit, but not a permit from us.
But that's been our plan.
That's been, okay. Because that was one of my initial thoughts was, I would much rather start looking at height variances on that garage and allow for that extra height than to have to navigate through the more complex issue of that curb. The, what happens on your lot gets, is fairly straightforward. Finding, on the findings on the variance on the, and that loss of that spot on the street makes it way more challenged. So, I'm going to close it with one, a couple of other thoughts. The other thought I had, and I'm certainly not redesigning your project. I'm sure a lot of people giving you guys some ideas. But I would, I would rather see a three-car garage, one without a brake. So, you can, which, so you end up saving two to three feet in your garage. And again, I, you know, the system, again, is, it's not set up for us to sit down and draw stuff and give you ideas. That's what staff does. But I, I would ask you to consider taking a look at that garage layout. Is there a way to expand that existing garage footprint? So, you only have, you have two walls instead of three walls, if I'm making any sense. That'd be one thing I would look at. I would also, you know, have you consider that, you know, the options that you have are if, is to, you know, pursue this and take it all the way and see if you can get an approval. And if we don't, we can't get there, because we don't make the policies. Our job is to make sure that applicants follow the rules. And then in the case of a variance, we've got tests that we have to make those seven findings. And if we can't make it, then we can't do it. That doesn't mean that our policymakers, who, you know, are our neighbors, wouldn't be willing to see it from a different perspective. We don't have as much room to wiggle here because we're not policymakers. We just are part of the policy. So, that's it. I really appreciate you guys coming out. I appreciate your passion, your energy, some of your thoughts that had me thinking. And I hope some of the feedback you got tonight was helpful.
It is, thank you. And we had another neighbor.
Mr. Nelson, can I speak?
Why not?
He doesn't... Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm biased because I do like John and Lori's neighbors. Let's tell you that right now. But I'm two houses down. And if you've driven down Blue Lantern, you've driven down my house quite a bit. And when you talk about parking, you know, they park their car out in front. And I don't want a street full of cars. But if you look at Blue Lantern, 250 feet from PCH, you can't park. So, when you're talking about Chart House, usually they park down on Green Lantern. But you talk about Coastal Kitchen and that area, they have a big parking lot across the street. There's no parking for 250 feet. And here, you're looking at that parking space, it's much less. And then you go up another 100 feet and you have Blue Lantern that's wide open, and nobody parks that. So, to me, I'd rather have a three-car garage there, a two-car garage there, than have people park out in front as a neighbor. Also, I looked at that house before I bought my house. I think it's wonderful that they're willing to invest in our neighborhood to have a nice house there, to have their lifetime house. So, I'm all for that. And it's just not property values. It's because of the quality of people they are and because of, you know, it's going to improve the neighborhood. It's a, is a great investment in the neighborhood and in Data Point. So, nobody parks there to go down to Coastal Kitchen. I'll just tell you that right now. Nobody parks there to go anywhere else but the neighborhood. And they're the neighborhood. So, to me, it makes sense, as a neighbor, not as a planner, but I've dealt with your planning department before. I've remodeled my house. I've put a lot of money into it. And I think you guys are great to work with, by the way. You know, because I come from Laguna Beach, which is, you know, I'd set myself on fire before I'd go back there. And I think Data Point makes good decisions. They're very sensible. Their planning department, the way they manage this city. And I hope that you'll look at this again and see if it makes sense. And like I said, I'd love to see more garage than more cars on the street. And that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. And yeah, I didn't say this, but it's a beautiful design. I love the design. So, I have no issues with your guys' design, but...
Yeah, Vice Chair, again, I appreciate everyone's feedback on this. I think that one, obviously, one of the things we really tried to do the best we could and emphasize is actually the current municipal code and really, and really aligning to that as best we could. And really, we've heard plenty of hardships. And this is a unique one, and I understand that. But again, I can't honestly think of a stronger hardship in aligning it to municipal code and the privileges that almost every single neighbor has on Tula Vista, on Blue Lantern, and the whole neighborhood. And again, just to be able to park four cars on an eclectic, unique street. And I want to know, I understand, I understand where you guys are coming from, but we have a one-time shot and we need to ask for your support again. This is all we have. Honestly, it started with parking three, four years ago, to be honest. I told Brendan and Danny this in our last meeting two months ago. It started with parking, and we designed the house from there. And you know what happened a couple of months ago. So, again, I'm going to close and walk away right now with a smile saying, "We need your support for this forever home that we've tried to do." Thank you.
Yeah, one final comment, just a little bit in response to yours about, you know, getting the temperature of the commission. And, you know, I'm very wary in advance of any decision-making time to indicate, you know, support or denial of any particular project. I just wanted, you know, you all not to hang your heads too low after, you know, some of the comments here because, you know, I do recognize that it is a tricky one. I would encourage you not to focus on, you know, a request for any number of spots or focusing on the cars in any way, but just kind of making sure these conditions we focus on. In response to the neighbor's comment, which, you know, it's, again, great to hear another neighbor here supporting the project because those are the people who'd be most impacted. And thinking about some of the things that were said, getting cars off the street here, you know, in terms of safety at a certain level, in addition to the residents that live on the property, getting a car off the street here, I do know a lot of people bike through this area. And that kind of actually makes it almost a safer way with no cars there in the way. So, just want to throw out that food for thought as well. And, yeah, I think we've probably spent more time on this project tonight than the rest of our items combined perhaps. So, maybe I'll stop then.
All right, thank you. That closes that item out, right? There's no action at this point? So, we move on to the next item. Mary wasn't coming back, right? Okay. Tricky one.
Chair Opal did leave for the evening. So, Vice Chair, if you could take over, it'd be great.
Okay. Thought I was going to get out of there. So, that puts us to... Where are we at? Staff reports. Do we have any staff reports?
The, an update in the general plan update process. We do have our general plan advisory committee meeting this week, Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. at Community Center. We'll be discussing the traffic modeling results as well as discussing some of our policy and goals going forward.
Great, thank you.
On which day did you say?
The general plan advisory committee is meeting this Wednesday at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner comments.
Well, after a long time, this year I had the opportunity to attend the Palm Festival in the city. And I, I got to say, the way City handles this is absolutely amazing. The number of people that are there to control there with law enforcement, fire, fire code, fire marshal, or their staff. And it's a combined effort with Public Works. And it's just absolutely remarkable. So, City ought to be commended for that.
Oh, after that, I went to Sting. And I have known that Sting is in our backyard. Sting is at Don Hene, so you guys are doing fantastic work. Very appreciative.
Sure, I'll echo that one. You know, we have some family in town for that. People always love to come visit for these. It's always good for the economy and, you know, it's a good showcase of the city. So, yeah, kudos to everyone.
So, everybody was there, it sounds like, because I was there. Sting was amazing. Great coming. The second time in the last two years I've been able to go and, and, yeah, it was a great experience. And then, yeah, anyways, that's all I've got. Thank you. We will adjourn until our next meeting, which is the 28th.